Great, okay, so alright, thanks for all tuning into this easement acceptance information session. I'm George Sidwick, planning board member. I'm on the call here with Gillian Varger, our town council, Jasmine Farinacci, our town planner. So the the purpose of this call is to provide a forum to gather information and address questions that residents may have regarding the acceptance of easements at this year's town meeting. I'm just gonna give a brief background and then we'll go through each of the each of the easements that are set up to be accepted. One one point of note, the Brook Run and Warwick Acres easement that's on Draper, Schaffner and Tisdale Drive will not be addressed at this easement. We're currently working with town council to address a conservation restriction on that property to assess the proper treatment of of a section of that easement, so. If you're on the call and would like to disconnect you, you can, or you can feel free to stay on. Just a quick, quick bit of background on easements in Dover. So, you know, as we probably all know, open space and the trail systems are really the gem of of Dover and the reason many of us live here, it's a really rare asset. And over the decades, the 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 planning board, the ZBA, and the conservation groups have worked with residents to to make sure there's access to those spaces and they're not undone by development. And that's through the the creation of of easements which which provide access to those those open spaces. The final step in the in the process of defining and accepting those easements is approval at town meeting. In 2022, the planning board identified properties where the standard practice of easement acceptance at town meeting had not occurred. Those easements were to be accepted at that May of that year. However, the town planner at the time pulled that from the town meeting due to some misunderstandings with some property owners. So we're now getting back to the acceptance of those easements. And so for those of you who own these properties in 2022, there is nothing new or incremental here in this action. In terms of what's what an easement acceptance is. So it's effectively a codification or a formalization of a property's easement as it relates to the town. It memorializes the original intent of those brands. How does the acceptance of an easement change the easement? Basically, in one main way, and that's through ease of extinguishment. So after the acceptance of an easement, it may only be extinguished via a vote of residents at town meeting versus without acceptance, it can be extinguished by the planning board. At a planning board meeting. As far as residents are concerned, the acceptance of an easement means better preservation of trails. And that's due to the allowing the town's residents to vote again on a potential extinguishment and not the five members of the planning board. With that, I think what we'll do is we'll go through each of the five easements that are that are up for. Jasmine, do you want to bring up those those slides? I think it, the first slide that we can discuss is slide three from the deck regarding Barcase Estates. That's the one. So before we get going on this one, can, yeah, there we go. We just got a quick roll call from anyone on the call who's impacted by this or for this particular easement. Anyone? If not, we can, we can skip it. Going once, going twice. Okay. All right, I think we can move on to Center Street. Yep. This impacts, this is a small easement, only impacting basically 695 Center Street. Anyone for this easement? Going once, going twice. All right. Dover Pines. This is on Ben Arthur's Way.
That's me.
Okay, and your name, please?
Yes, Ali, Aliya Robbie.
And your address, please. That's your address?
15 Ben Arthur's Way, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, yeah, as you can see here. This is, you know, it's it's hiking horseback riding, cross-country skiing, you know, access here. Access to that that green area, which is which is town town-owned land. The white, the white color here in all of these slides denotes private land, green is public land. Do you have any questions regarding this easement or around the process at all?
Yes, I do. First off, unfortunately, me and my wife, we missed the meeting of 2022. So.
That was the sort of point.
Exactly, so. Then I met with Mr. Sullivan about two years ago, I think. And basically learned more about what's going on. But bottom line, we have been resident or owners of this property since 2021, June 2021. So basically, we were aware that this easement exists, but we didn't know some details. Details such as basically, this is a public easement. It's not just the utility easement. And then, speaking of the public, we have had strangers, and we have the record of that, basically passing by and glancing through our buildings and property. Then, since one or two years ago, because of the, you know, some people that walk their dog in the past, I noticed the traffic of the deers with the ticks is basically getting higher in our property. And I have pictures of that, which is absolutely something that, you know, nobody wants that. And not only it costs us for basically spraying and giving these companies coming and trying to keep our property safe for our children, also poses, you know, I'm a biologist, many different risks that when there's more traffic of different creatures around the property. Then finally, my question is that if this is, let's say, easy access to the trail over there, so why not? Because everything is in the green area, the trail, the trails, the yellow line, if I'm not wrong, correct? So why not, basically, the 46 Pine Street property is having or providing access to it? In fact, if, I can't show it on the screen, but let's say if you come to the right side of that pink public access line, if you, yes, please, if you go to that yellow line, just on the trail. So over there, you will find multiple signs, but the by the owner of that 46 Pine Street that this access is completely basically private, you cannot pass through. And bottom line that, you know, showing that we are not part of that, this trail is not for your access. So my, my, my question is, first, first of all, back in 1995, this property of 15 Ben Arthur's Way did not exist. And they said, okay, let's find this easy access to this trade from this cul-de-sac. But since this property was established, I was learned that the access from 46 Pine Street completely removed. And then there were some other accesses by other neighbors that also were removed. So we are the only property here, which is basically part of our property is not even in the green area at all. And we should be responsible for access of the people going through. One more thing, in the past year, I've had very, very few, very few of our neighbors, and it's only one or two, which by all means, I I don't mind my neighbor to come even sit down in my property. But that's the only traffic that I have seen. So no more of the people, really, like, I I'm just wondering that why this easement should stay in this property, in this basically location, when there is really no use of that?
George, would you like to answer that, or would you like me to?
I mean, I can, I can take a whack at it. So so it seems like the your concerns are. Just to be clear, so first, I think you said that an increasing number of people are using it, I guess, and looking in your house, and then at the end, you said that there, it's not.
No, that was in the past. That was back in 22, basically, and 23. So as I said, the use of this easement for the past one year has decreased significantly. So, speaking of that, basically, the, you know, unfamiliar faces that I saw back in 22 and 23, right? That can easily, you know, come back again. And that's something that I I really don't appreciate that. I I just, you know, as I said it again, neighbors, they're familiar faces. I welcome them. I can easily basically open my door. They can come and, you know, have an afternoon tea with us. But bottom line, when I see unfamiliar faces, which now for the past year, I haven't seen it. So basically, they can come back. That's something that concerns me. So why, in in general, I get it, it's basically, you know, enjoying the nature, everything for our neighbors, the community, and I'm trying to be part of that community as best as I can. But why one single property has to suffer on that? Why, when the trails passing through this 46 Pine Street is not part of it at all?
Okay, yeah, so in terms of why, why your property has the easement and not and not 46 Pine, obviously, that's just the way that the easement was was drawn. Why 46 Pine does not have an easement or access to that? You know, I I don't know, maybe something to look into. This is all green and the trail runs, looks like through their property with access to Pine Street. But you're saying there's signs up that say that people can't use that, is that what you?
Bottom, bottom of, as I, as you were trying to show with that cursor, bottom of that basically property. I don't know how much of that, you know, property, the green area is, belongs to 46 Pine Street. I don't know that, but you can see multiple signs, basically.
Okay, well, you know, this is, this is donated, denoted as a, as a as a trail, I don't, you know, and and as public, public land here, so I'm not really sure.
Bottom line, that trail, that yellow line that is passing from the Pine Street all the way down, nobody can access that.
On the left side of the picture.
Left side of that, left side of that green line, I mean, the pink line. Yeah, that whole yellow, absolutely, you cannot access it. Even when you go to the right side of the pink line, and then you see the signs of the same, I assume it belongs to 46 Pine Street, that they have put it there.
Okay. What we could do is, if if it would work for you, we can, we could walk the property with you. So we can get a better idea of what's going on there?
Absolutely.
But this meeting isn't to address any of the use, though, just to be clear. So this, this meeting is is to address this easement. So this, sorry to interject, George. I just want to make sure that we're being very, very clear about our intention here. So while we can certainly address concerns about the trails, I would certainly address that we take those up and include open space in those conversations, if this is something that's under open space. But for this discussion, we are discussing this easement that's existing here. So not, we're not discussing anything in the yellow. And what we're bringing to town meeting is not any discussion about any of the yellow trail. This easement is existing, and it will remain existing, and we're not proposing to change it. We're just proposing to accept it at town meeting. If we vote not to accept it at town meeting, this easement will still exist, but it can be extinguished by the planning board at a later date in time, should that be the process you wish to pursue, and they feel that would be necessary on their purview. They don't have to relinquish it or extinguish it. So that's, that's the focus of this. So we can certainly take up questions about open space or trails, but not for the purpose of this intent. And we would certainly want to get open space involved if that's their trail.
Okay, may I call you Jasmine by your first name?
Absolutely, please do.
I appreciate. So thank you for that. I am aware of that, what the meeting is about. But what I'm trying to say, whether in this meeting or another meeting, I I was planning to come and basically submitted an official complaint about this, that why this is easement exists. I get it, back in, I have a copy, back in basically March 22nd, 1995, this was basically, you know, let's say, decided. So, as I said, there was no property that time. This property was basically built back in 1997. So, and then, if it was access to this trail, there are so many easier accesses to that.
Right, but again, that's not a conversation that we can address now at this time. So I welcome you to come to the office. And we can work with open space to address those concerns. But if you don't have any concerns about the existing easement.
I do. I mean, this is the whole thing.
I understood. I I understand, and Jasmine, Jasmine is 100% correct. We're not, we're not changing the easement on this, on this.
I get it. This meeting is not for changing it, but I'm just trying to say that the existence of it is something that was not basically, is not reflecting to today's, let's say, the usage of it. It's not something that, and also is causing, is causing the possible theft or, let's say, health-related issues. And I can prove it scientifically, and.
Well, we could, we could have that further discussion within the town.
I understand, and and what we're, what we're offering.
Finally, just one more thing, in in terms of, again, I'm trying as best as I can to show that I really support the community. But when it comes to these issues, I have a nine-year-old daughter, and I don't want her future, or even right now, to be in jeopardy. Then I have learned about Airbnb, basically.
Oh, that's not, no, we can't discuss that at this time. I'm so sorry.
So, that's fine, but that is causing the possibility of really strangers coming to this area.
Okay, and we can't, we can't prevent that. It's public. We have no realm over that. So again, please, if you have more questions, more intent concerns about the use of this, you'll have to come into the office. We're not, we cannot discuss the use of this at this time. It's not what we're here for, but we would be happy to set you up with open space to address those concerns that you have.
So today's meeting is about acceptance. So, so why we were, we were called for this meeting? I mean, to participate if I cannot address these concerns?
Because we can't, this article is to accept this portion right here at town meeting, and only to accept that. So at this time, we could not address in any way, shape, or form, any type of access issues with this, any type of restrictions. We don't have a legal right to restrict people from going through there, so we just don't.
With all due respect, I understand that, but what what is this meeting for? I mean, acceptance. I mean, you already saying that it's already accepted, and then you're forming the meeting. I I don't get it. I mean, it's already gonna be accepted.
So a simple process. So all of these easements are existing currently. We're not proposing any of them. These easements all exist. When these easements were gifted to the town at the time of gifting, at whatever time they were created, at that moment, they should have been accepted at a town meeting vote. For whatever reason, they were not. This was discovered by a previous planner prior to myself. And just to clarify, to fully follow through with the correct legal process, we would like to accept them at town meeting as they should have been done. Now, as if they are not accepted at town meeting, they all still exist, and they are all still open to be used as they exist now. We're not proposing any new uses. We're not proposing to change any uses. Nothing about this will change other than whose ability it is to grant extinguishment of these easements, whether that's the planning board or town meeting. That's the only reason we've brought these easements before.
Okay, so.
Sorry, can can we, can we just have a little more clarification on that? This is Rob Shapiro, One Wilson's Way. Can you just, I I appreciate the explanation. Can can you just expand on on that a little bit? I was trying to better understand what the difference is between, I guess, the the terminology you were using as to whether or not the easement is accepted. It doesn't change who can use it or whether or not it exists. Can you just expand upon a little bit upon what it does change?
Everybody's deed, everybody that has an easement on their property, your deed references that easement. And it will give full explicit detail and where it exists along the property. And all of those easements are legally existing. They are all legally recorded at the registry of deeds within these documents, within the deeds, within the subdivisions, and they're recorded within the town as well. What happened was, since it wasn't accepted at town meeting currently, if you, for some reason, were to desire to extinguish an easement, you may go to the planning board and request them to extinguish it, and they may deny or approve that based on their interpretation of the use or the need of the easement and its existence. If we were to accept these easements at town meeting, only then, the easements can only then be extinguished through a town meeting vote, so it wouldn't be in the planning board's position any longer. It would be up to a town meeting vote to extinguish. It's the only difference is who is allowed to extinguish these easements. So they all exist. These are all existing currently. And none of these are new or newly proposed. We are not proposing to change the use of how any of these are. So if you have an easement on the back of your property that is not currently open and used by the public, we are not offering the public to come use it. We are not stating that these are open trails. We are not trying to propose any new uses in any of the way these are used. We are just saying it's a, it's sort of like a clerical cleanup, that this process wasn't followed in its entirety, and we would like to bring it to completion now.
Thank you. That's helpful. Who, who, can you please provide some clarity on who, who, who makes up the planning board?
So there's five members on the planning board. So it's Carol Lisbon is the chair, Jody Shu is the vice chair, George Sidwick with us now is a member, Bill Motley is a member, and Valerie Lynn is a member, and Katie Graves-Williams is an associate member.
You're issued.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I ask, this meeting is basically asking anyone who is participating to accept or not to accept?
We would like to know what your concerns might be relative to the easements in pink, because that's what's up for discussion.
But those are my concerns.
Okay.
Understood. But Mr. Robbie, as I said previously, why don't, I I've offered a sightwalk, I think, if it may help you out, better, to better understand where where this, where your concerns are. And we can do that with a member of the planning board and a member of the open, open space committee.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
In particular, is is sort of the town guru on on easements in town, the maps, the history. She's not, she's not on this call right now, unfortunately, but. But if that, if that's something you'd like to do, then as as Jasmine stated, you can get in touch with the the planning board, with her, the office, and set that up.
Absolutely, I would do so. But just a general question, if you can answer it now. Can any easement could be removed or not?
Yes, it can be extinguished.
Okay.
It can be extinguished. Again, that's the big difference here between acceptance and non-acceptance, is that without acceptance, it can be extinguished by a vote of the planning board. And again, you can contact Jasmine if that's something you'd be interested in. Or if it's accepted, then it has to go through.
Okay, and is, is there any easement which was extinguished or removed in the past?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for answering.
And what are the criteria for an easement to be removed?
So it could be the assessment of usefulness to the residents. You know, where it, where it, where it begins, where it ends, whether it's sort of, let's say, relevant, some, some, you know, some of them had had an origin that made sense at the time, that may not now. So we take all these things into consideration. Again, we would, we would we would take open, open space committee's thoughts into consideration there as well.
Great. And and when you say the residents, do you specifically mean of Dover?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And is there any record of those which were basically decided to be extinguished in the past on your website?
No, but you can come into the office and make, and request to see those documents, or we could email them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Jasmine, you want to please go to the next slide, Taylor Estates? That's not distance, well, you've got there, yeah, okay. So Six Village Hill Road, is there anyone on the call interested in this easement? Going once, going twice. Okay. Moving on to Wilson's Way. So that's 1, 3, 5, and 8, Wilson's Way. Is there anyone on the call?
Yes.
Interested? Okay. And your address, please?
One Wilson's Way. And my wife, Amanda, is on as well.
Okay, thank you. Sure, any questions, concerns?
Yeah, so I guess I'm just looking for a little, maybe edification, and I'll, I'll give you my understanding, which, which I fully admit I could be partially incorrect. But my, my understanding is that the easement was established as part of a subdivision of these properties, and also on file with the registrar as a part of subdivision of these properties was acceptance by the town that the road would be taken over by the town once the street was fully populated, which has, has since occurred, and we have a motion to, in fact, have that take place. But I think, you know, addressing these simultaneously probably is fair and and makes sense. And, you know, we're, we're open to to the process certainly, and, you know, appreciate the opportunity and the information on this call, and would actually like to come in and learn, learn more. But I think, you know, addressing these two things simultaneously is probably an equitable approach, and we're, we're very interested in having a street taken over. We're happy to help preserve the easement, but but again, I'd like those to be addressed as as one item, as I believe they are in the documentation filed regarding the subdivision and establishing the, these access points.
Sorry, to just to clarify, are you saying, is there a citizen's petition at a town meeting to to accept the road? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
That's right. Yep, and the, the, the road, the sub, and I'm gonna get all the terminology wrong here, so I apologize. But the document that established the subdivision, and I believe also codified the easements, also made clear that the town had agreed in, in the documents to accept the road once it had been built out and was populated. And so our citizen's petition is to effectuate that now that that the subdivision has been been built and the street is fully occupied. And so, again, just wanted to make sure these things were getting linked together.
That that acceptance, that the the acceptance of of the town of the road is related to the, to the easement?
I believe it is because they, they're both, you know, part of, I believe the easement was established as a part of the subdivision agreement, which also dictates that the town will take over the road. And so doing one without the other seems against the spirit of the subdivision agreement and and the deeds for the property.
I don't know, Gillian, if you want to jump in here?
Sure, yeah. So I I haven't looked at the subdivision approvals. So my, but my best guess, without having reviewed it, is that it probably says that once the development has checked all the various boxes, and one of which being the establishment establishment of the easement, then the acceptance of the right-of-way, as a public right-of-way, can take place. Um, so if that's the last outstanding right.
No, well, sorry, we can look at, maybe we should pull the documents and look at it together. We can take it as a follow-up. But I, I mean, I I think if I understood you correctly earlier, these easements are established, right? The easement exists. It's, it's very rarely, but occasionally used. And we honor it. It's just not, not accepted. I think the subdivision agreement is also established. And it also, you know, has not been accepted, and we have a citizen's petition to have it fully accepted, which would include the town taking over the road.
Right, I mean, it makes, it sounds like both of these are essentially similar kinds of cleanup subdivision flows-out matters. And I agree, it makes sense to do both of those things. Without having read the subdivision approvals. without having read the subdivision approval documents, again, it's hard to uh comment on whether or not you know, the there there's anything else that needs to be done or uh whatnot, so we can definitely take a look at those, but um I agree that both of those sound like last, you know, punch list kind of cleanup matters for the creation of the subdivision that makes sense to cross off the list.
Sounds like maybe two, two different issues in one document. I I don't know.
I would just like to make it clear again, though, that if if this isn't approved at town meeting, this easement still exists.
We understand.
Accepting this is, okay, I just want to make sure that that's.
We 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 fully understand. Our road exists too. Um, it's just that we're responsible for it.
Right, right.
Okay, so maybe something to uh just look into a bit.
Right, no, I think it probably makes sense to take a closer look at the subdivision documents, make sure that I, it is appropriate for I moving forward. And I, you know, if the planning board agrees, once we've taken a closer look, maybe if the planning board can, I give some kind of letter of support or something at town meeting to help with that process, and all of that can get taken care of at town meeting simultaneously. Um. And we'll just have to take the documents to um to see the full picture there.
That would be, that'd be great. Should we just follow up with you directly to do that? And and happy to, happy to work with you directly on it.
No, if you could contact the planning board office, please, and we'll be in touch about the next steps. We may have an additional meeting on this. Um, so this is uh our town council who's here, so she she's not at the uh a bit available to meet with the public necessarily, uh but we can mediate through her to get you the information that you need.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks for everyone's time.
Okay. I think that is the um, I think that's the end, Jasmine.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Anyone come on later? Any concerns?
Yeah, yes, Mike Donovan, excuse me. Mike Donovan, seventy-five County Street. County Street. C O U N T Y.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, um, did you cover Warwick Acres? Hello?
Does it happen to go by another name? I don't, Warwick Acres is not one of the ones that we had up for acceptance. Is there anything else that it's called by chance?
Um, Draper Road?
Draper Road. So, um, the Draper Road easement is is not on for town meeting?
Yeah, I cut, sorry, I cut out there for a second. Uh, I don't know what happened. Um, so yeah, you're 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 uh interested in the the Draper Road easement?
I got, I got a meeting, I got a no- meeting notice from the planning board saying that easements are up for going to the uh town meeting for a vote.
Yes.
I'm I'm not an, I'm not an owner of an easement. I'm in a butter.
Okay. Yeah, so we, so we kicked off the meeting uh addressing that. So we're not, we're actu- actually addressing that easement today. Uh, given that there was some some recent information that's been uh brought to light regarding a conservation restriction on one of the properties on Schaffner on that easement. And so we're we're gonna work through with with town council next week to see uh if if in fact uh that that easement will be up for acceptance at at town meeting.
Okay, I got you. Um, just kind of customer feedback here. Um, you sent a letter with the with the link to the Zoom meeting, which had a really long IP address. And I went to the town website. There was nothing in the um town meeting calendar that, you know, had that link embedded in it electronically. So I had to spend like five or six times trying to get that, you know, the uh the letter capitalization in small case and in order and all the other stuff to uh to get to the meeting. So it just made it difficult. You may wanna get that put on the uh town calendar and get the uh web address embedded in, so all you have to do is click on it.
Newly noted. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay. Um, okay, so if it's not on the agenda, then I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, so this was basically established ours, let's say, back in nineteen ninety-five. And why it's been almost thirty years that now this acceptance is taking place? What happened that it didn't happen earlier, ten years ago, fifteen years ago? Why it took so long for the town to come to this decision? Now is the time that we really go for, you know, a final, 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 final step.
Well, I mean, that's that's um, your yours isn't the only one, obviously, and some of these have been around for for longer. Um, in twenty twenty-two, uh we went through sort of a a bit of a a planning board sort of cleanup, for lack of a better word, and we wanted to um identify all of the easements in town. Um, and actually map them out, recognize where they all are. Uh, and as a part of that process, to to clean up the um sort of administratively, if you will, um, and 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 legally to finalize those easements. It's as simple as that. Why it went that long without being recognized? I I don't know. I wasn't here. Uh, but but it did, and um again, in twenty twenty-two is is when we really uh s- found these um and and set out to sort of finalize finalize those easements. It's as simple as that. I can't give you much more information than that. I don't I don't know if you have anything, uh Jasmine?
Yeah, I mean, I I unfortunately, I didn't receive the notice back in twenty twenty-two, so if I was aware of that, if I was basically um submitting my objection, do you think it would have made a difference that time?
If you if you were submitting your your objection to your your easement being accepted at that time?
Yes.
Well, n- no, I mean, the way you could, the if you're looking to get your easement extinguished, it seems like that's what you're asking.
Yes, I am.
Okay, well then, you know, it wouldn't matter if it was twenty twenty-two or nineteen ninety-seven, you know, it it that that process can begin at any time. Uh, if if you if you just go to the the planning board office and and you could go through the through that um, again, through that process with Jasmine.
I will. Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? All right.
Quick question. Sorry, when is uh the Draper Road set of easements gonna be up for discussion? It sounds like not today, but will we get another letter or something on the website?
Yeah, so so this is sort of a um, you know, this is a, this is a first, a first uh first go at it here. Uh, we're gonna have uh some follow-up. We may have a follow-up meeting uh and 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 discussions. If it if it comes time, uh if if that it will be accepted, then then we will likely have another another meeting uh to to address uh concerns from those from those abutters. All right. All right, uh Jasmine, can you stop recording and stay on the line, please? Uh, everyone else can disconnect. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate.